Okay, next line item we are discussing, public safety, the police department. Who wanted to hold the police department's budget? Somebody said "hold." All right, we'll go forward to the next "hold" item, traffic and parking. Francis, if you want to go to the microphone.
Francis Fleming, 12 Pleasant Street. I'm just curious, it's quite a significant increase, forty-some percent. I'm wondering why that is such a significant jump this year.
Okay, for traffic and parking, we're looking to see... The sergeant stipend.
Hi, Wally has Finance Committee. The sergeant that was paid that stipend over the last several years is retiring in a few days. So we need to hire a part-time person to do that from the outside. And that's about what it takes, we think, to get a part-time person to do that.
Okay, did you get your answer? Anyone else have any questions about traffic and parking? Okay, we're going to go forward to the schools. Someone held the school budget.
Thanks, John Halfridge Wallace wrote. My question is to who's from the school committee here? Who represents that? So we've got... Okay, sorry, that's awkward. What is the... So there are two main drivers of the budget. One is benefits and health, we understand that. The other structural driver is special education. Do we expect those... Is that a continual increase that we should expect for ever? Growing and growing? Just like... We don't understand the benefits... Not the benefits, the drivers of that cost. So could you elaborate on that?
Question?
Well, no. Are you going to be able to address that?
Possibly not. I'm Colleen Cugan, South Street Court, Rockport. Rob Lebo is in the building and is the best person to answer that question.
There he is.
There you go. So if you could restate the question.
Okay, so it was just a question about the drivers behind the school budget. You know, I think we understand the drivers between, you know, benefits and pensions, but the other big line item is special ed. Does that continue... What's the projection and what's the strategy to hold on to that?
The biggest driver right now is special ed costs. They are unpredictable, necessary, required, and expected for learners that need those services. And we never know exactly what they're going to be. The reserve fund helps us somewhat, that was established three years ago. Personnel, like the whole town, is seventy to eighty percent of the budget. And there are step and lane increases in that budget, as well as negotiated increases. Supply lines, equipment lines are pretty well flat-funded in terms of increases. There is one position increase in the school budget, and that is for a math interventionist at the elementary school. And that would be a specific individual that would work with students that are struggling in one of the most important academic areas in terms of being able to achieve in all the academic areas. So I heard part of the question as I was getting lunch.
Just a reminder, we can't have conversation, so I'll have to identify speakers just so that we can maintain control and get out of here before the 2:00 AM new time that I've identified as the meeting ending. So is there any other discussion or motions as regards public education? Yes, sir, walking towards the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, David Given, Smarmine Way. The loss of students is about thirty or thirty-three percent of Rockport students, ten percent overall. When we import students, the remuneration you get from other municipalities, does it cover the costs you just talked about, the sped? Also, does it anticipate downstream OPEC, capital reserve needs? Or is it just a short-term free cash issue with no regard for long-term liabilities? That's my question.
And Rob, before you respond to that, I just see that Senator Bruce Tar has entered these... this chamber. So I'd like to recognize and thank him for his service to our community. Thank you.
Hi, Bruce.
If I understood the question clearly, it had to do with students that come through school choice, pretty much.
Yes.
When I first arrived here, which is now five years ago, there was a hundred and seventy students who choiced into our schools. Right now, there is two-hundred-and-thirty-four students that choice into our schools. So that's an increase of sixty-some students. We never add positions for those students. We maintain the programs that we have for our existing students. And it's most important at the high school level, in which our total high school enrollment right now is two-hundred-and-ninety-six students, I believe. If you didn't have those choice kids, there is no way that you could have the richness of program in fine arts as well as academics, especially at the high end, in terms of advanced placement courses and those sorts of things, that you'd be able to do if you had a school that only had two-hundred-and-twenty kids in it.
I don't disagree, but...
We're not having a conversation, remember. There are other people I need to let speak.
What was that again?
And there is a gentleman right next to you, we're going to let him speak, and that's just how we have to do it.
Mr. Moderator, that didn't answer my question, I asked if the cost...
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you. Yes, sir. We'll get back to you, we just have to hear from everybody.
Toby Arsenian, and this is irrelevant, we skipped from traffic and parking to schools and missed four-hundred, which was held.
Yes, we're going to go back to that. Anything else regarding schools? Taking off a jacket? Anybody?
I'd like to rephrase the question. The individual amount per student that we get, does it cover the costs on an individual prorata basis of sped, OPEC anticipation, capital reserve needs? Or are we importing short-term cash flow so we can maintain the luxury of the high school that you mentioned? I don't disagree with the vision. I'm asking you, does the individual reimbursement fund have a business model that is sustainable?
If you looked at a pure business model, if I understand the question, school choice...
It's a budget meeting.
School choice brings $5,000 per student. And then there is a special ed increment, that if a student has special ed costs, those are covered by the community that they come from through that increment. So there's a formula that's run through in terms of the cost of their teacher, the cost of their supplies, or their counseling, or whatever, is added on to that $5,000. If you...
Sorry.
It's okay. If you simply took the total school budget and divided it by the number of students, you would find a much higher cost than that $5,000 per student.
Thank you.
So in terms of a business model, $5,000 doesn't... does not cover the cost per student that the entire district has, but we do not have to add programs or add teachers to cover those costs. So in other words, if we have a classroom at the elementary school that has sixteen students in it, you wouldn't split that class. You'd have that class of sixteen students. But our classroom size policy would say, depending on the grade, that you could have as many as twenty students in that classroom. So that those extra students that come through choice, they fill those available slots that are in that classroom, so for no extra cost, because the special ed costs aren't counted in that, there's one teacher, but there are now four extra students in that classroom at around $5,000 per student. So there's $20,000 that comes into that classroom as part of the business model that helps cover that cost that you'd have even if that classroom had the sixteen students. So it really depends on how you look at it. If you just look at the raw numbers, you'd say, well, the cost per student is, and I haven't run it lately, it's probably fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars per student for the district. Choice only brings in five, but in the example I showed you, that classroom doesn't change at all whether it has sixteen students in it or whether it has twenty students in it. And you're gaining $20,000 worth of revenue to your budget to help to fray the cost overall. So, did that help at all?
Thank you. Unless we have anyone that wants to talk about the numbers for the school system, I think we're going to move on from there. All righty. Question? Yes. Jim. And we haven't gotten to the DPW, so that will be next.
So, Jim Gardner, 1 Pleasant Street. With regard to this issue, the question of how much school choice costs Rockport, I looked into this a little bit. Now, there's... The school has always made the argument that every school choice kid brings in an additional $5,000 to the budget, and that they're not adding any more teachers to handle that student. So therefore, it's a net plus to the school. The problem, though, is that without those school... We have about... You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there's about a thousand kids total, K through twelve, in Rockport right now.
A little less than that.
A little less. And of that thousand, about two-hundred-and-fifty are coming from... Primarily Gloucester, but two-hundred-and-fifty coming from other towns?
The actual enrollment is nine-hundred-and-thirty-four right now, total district enrollment, and the number of choice kids is two-thirty-two.
Okay.
They're not dramatically different, but...
So without those two-hundred-and-thirty-two, we would have something of seven-hundred-some-odd students, right?
I'd argue that there'd be resident families that in, let's say, a high school, without some of the offerings that it's now able to have with regard to fine arts and advanced placement program, who would choice out of the district that aren't doing so now, so that you have a sort of a twofold problem.
Right.
When I came, there was... Actually, when I came, I gave you the numbers, but years before that, there was a period of time when there was as many as a hundred-and-fifty students choicing out of Rockport within the last ten or eleven-year period of time, leaving the schools and taking the $5,000 with them because you would pay that $5,000 to Gloucester, Hamilton, Wentworth, Manchester, or wherever. And now the number of kids that choice out, without my figures right here, I believe is in the twenties.
Right. So...
Jim, we're not going to have a conversation.
I do, I haven't even made my point yet.
So I'll wait for the question.
We're not going to have a conversation. We need to move forward. If there's additions or subtractions from the school budget, I want to hear them. If we're talking philosophy and different points of education, we can have that conversation elsewhere, because we've got to get through the rest of the meeting. So is there a change to the budget number?
No, there's no change to the budget number.
Let's move on to DPW. Four-hundred. That was held. Mr. Arsenian.
Toby Arsenian, ninety-five Granite Street. Looking at four-hundred at the bottom of page forty-six, if you look at the very bottom of the page, you'll see transfer station with two line items. The lower one, operating expense, mostly haulage, for three-hundred-and-twenty-seven, one-hundred-and-thirty-three. I move to decrease that by $10. Now, $10 is if not of any particular interest or concern, and if $10 turned out to be crucial, although I'm poor and cheap, I could slip them the $10. The point here is to talk about the operation of the transfer station. And the commissioners, three of them, appointed, not elected, have said at two public meetings, one, the hearing where the fees for the dump were set, attended by all of seven citizens, and another at a Board of Selectmen workshop, the commissioners have said that they intend to impose the pay-as-you-throw system across the board on the whole town next year. And in the meanwhile, they've raised the fees for the standard stickers from one-sixty-five to two-fifty, and were incautious enough to say at one of their meetings that that was to induce people to go to the pay-as-you-throw. So if you feel as I do, that we want to go forward with both systems, the pay-as-you-throw and the standard stickers, in the year to come, this year it's set. If you want both systems to go forward in the year to come, please join me in voting for the $10 reduction to send a sign and a signal to the DPW commissioners. And understand that this is only symbolic. The commissioners, the three of them, not the Board of Selectmen, not us, the town meeting, have control of the dump. They can do whatever they please. This is just to send them a signal.
And by the way, thank you, Toby. The $10, I think, came from a discussion that we had that led to what Jim and I, our momentary discussion, that when we're talking about the budget, we're really talking about changing the budget. And only tangentially do we ask a few questions to understand an item, but we're not just, you know, complaining about it. We're actually trying to come to resolution on a budget. So that's why, you know, I cut off discussion on education, and Toby is doing as I suggested, coming up with, you know, you're adding some money, you're taking away some money, and you're moving towards a budget. So I appreciate you remembering that. And if anybody in the DPW commissioners or the director want to discuss that, $10 or anything, we can do that. Okay. So, you... Oh, yes.
Joseph Museo, seven Norman Stone Drive. In every item in the budget, every subject, there is a head person, whether it's the harbor master or the police chief or the library. Significantly, is it an omission that under four-hundred, there is no mention that says administration, stipends, salaries, and wages? What is the head of the DPW... Where is his line item? Is it somewhere else?
Want to talk about that?
Joe Perici, Director of Public Works. It is in that administration budget. It is also, as I administer, the water enterprise and sewer enterprise, portions of that are in that budget as well, in the administration.
Well, you'll excuse me, it doesn't answer my question.
Again, we're not going to get into a discussion. I'm sorry, I just need to hear from everybody before I can hear from you again, Joe.
May I continue my point, sir? It doesn't...
Let me just...
Sir?
Wait. I'm going to see if anybody else wants to discuss this. If not, I will get back to you. So here we go. Yes, Sarah.
Yeah, I think...
Oh, I will.
I agree with Mr. Museo. I think we had discussed this a couple of years ago, that DPW salaries are confusing because they're split between administration and the enterprise funds. So I think it would be helpful if FinCom or the town administrator could just give a lot, like an explanation of the... It's impossible, the way it's written out, to figure out the top salaries in the DPW.
Anybody else? And you understand, I just need to be fair to the other three-hundred people to give everyone an opportunity before I go back. I think we have a bylaw in that regard. So...
May I continue?
Yes.
I certainly respect that it's listed as administration, but the incongruity that every other department lists a head person by salary, and in this one case, doesn't, it simply obfuscates a clarification of this matter. And to tell me that it's spread somewhere else is not the appropriate way to do budget items. I have a great deal of respect for Mr. Perici. I think he does an excellent job. I've spoken to him. He's always very responsive. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about procedures that allow people to understand what is or isn't going on. We spent twenty-five minutes on a clerk that had to... The town clerk that had to explain herself, almost in a humiliating way, but here we mask, in this one item, why the person isn't cited, and I don't get it. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to get Joe off the hook. He doesn't determine how the numbers are presented at a town meeting. The Finance Committee determines how the numbers are presented at a town meeting. The DPW budget is split between general fund costs and enterprise fund costs, and his salary gets paid out of all three of those things, and that's how we keep track of it. But if you have a question about how it's being presented to town meeting, someone from Finance Committee should get up and explain, because that's their job.
Can we not have a total amount of money?
That is one department head that we do not break out, but as you would find in the schedule, that's part of Article Four, his salary is one-oh-eight-seven-sixty-eight.
And now we are still back on the $10 issue? The $10 issue? Anybody that we haven't heard from? We're not going to hear from too many people, because it's $10 after all. Jim? Twenty, we might have spent some more time.
So I don't know if this is in order or not. I'm sure I'll be told soon if it isn't. But with regard to the increase at the transfer station, I was trying to figure out, if I had to speak about this, how I would speak about it. And so what I'm going to do is not talk about the transfer station, but instead tell you that if we... Let me ask you this.
No.
No? No? It's out of order. Okay. So Toby is right. We are setting the fee for flat fee at the transfer station in a way to try to induce people to move to pay-as-you-throw. We are doing that because flat fee, the way we've been doing it in town, is very expensive. It's inequitable, and it invites a lot of rule-breaking, that we don't have the manpower to try to catch. The way we do it now incentivizes people to sneak as much trash into the transfer station as possible under a single sticker, okay? And we have never sold as many stickers as there are households in town. We know that there are people who are doubling up on trash for a single sticker. We've found landlords who are bringing in their tenants' trash. We've even found trash from Gloucester in the transfer station. We now, because we're trying to run two systems at the same time, pay-as-you-throw and flat fee, we know there are people who are buying the pay-as-you-throw sticker, which is much less expensive, to get access, and then throwing their trash in regular trash bags into the trailers, okay? We know, based on an extensive amount of work we've done in the past three years looking at other transfer stations, that we could save probably forty to fifty percent of our hauling costs if we eliminated flat fee and just went to pay-as-you-throw. We can lead a horse to water, but we can't make them drink, okay? We would really like it if people voluntarily switched to pay-as-you-throw. The longer we maintain a flat fee system, the longer we are going to be a high-cost, inequitable, and susceptible to abuse system. And that's whether we, you know, if we offer it to anybody, because it just leaves open the possibility that people can sneak trash in. We don't want to do that. Right now, we know that most people in town are overpaying for the trash that they generate. If you're an individual, if you're a retired couple, if you're a regular-sized family that does a good job of recycling, you are overpaying for the trash that you generate based on the flat fee system. We cannot set a price that is equitable for you. You are subsidizing the businesses that throw out a ton of trash per month. You're subsidizing the people that are sneaking trash in, okay? And we can't... We don't want to hire more people to try to police the station, that's just going to drive costs up even more, okay? So yes, you know, we have decided that if we're going to continue to offer a flat fee system, and a lot of people want it, because a lot of people have figured out how to game it, I understand, we're going to get a lot of resistance if we try to eliminate it, but we've decided that it is such a high-cost, problematic system, that if you want it, you're going to have to pay more, okay? And that's just the way it is. And if you've been good about recycling, if it's just the two of you, or it's just you, or it's just a small family, and you've been good about recycling, I guarantee you're going to save money if you go to pay-as-you-throw. And we are trying to save you money. Despite the fact that you voted to spend money on every article up here, I think generally people would like to save money, and this is an opportunity to do that.
Before we get another comment, important announcement? Important announcement? The cafeteria is out of food. They have closed. So, and that's not April Fools, it's a traumatic thing, but that's just the way it is. Maybe that will speed up this $10 discussion. We're going to hear from a couple more people. Amy.
Amy Seabrook, seven Broadway. I didn't know that. That is the most interesting piece of information I got today, that pay-as-you-throw is the one that is preferred by the people who run the system.
And four out of five dentists.
And four out of five dentists agree. So what I'm thinking is... No, I'm not thinking, I want to know. Has this been told? I've heard so many rumors about dump stickers lately... oh, transfer station stickers lately, but I haven't heard this, and I hope it's getting out. I feel like one of the privileged few among all of us who are hearing this today. Go tell your friends.
We have a Times reporter who is going to tell everybody, everybody, about this. One more comment, we're talking a $10 decrease.
Eric Hutchins, forty-five Pools Lane. In regards to the last two comments, the Department of Public Works has just posted an extremely informative slideshow on their webpage with lots of facts and figures on this, lots more that could ever be presented here at town meeting. Everyone should go take a look at that slideshow. It's on their webpage. It's posted, right? Still?
All right. Is there anybody else? Last comment?
Larry Sale, forty-five Stargum. Once, it says preferred method, but that's because people are financially going to that forcibly. So if you're going by preferred method, by the number of people that do it, that doesn't mean it's preferred. Once you lose, all the people are paying flat fee, the revenue generated by stickers is going to go way down. The cost of the bags went down. Once you lose all that money from the flat fee stickers, how much are the bags going to go up to recoup that money? You're not just going to let it go. You're going to get the money somehow. The bags are going to go up. How much?
We're really... I know this is fascinating, we could talk about this for a very long time. We're just talking about now decreasing $10 from item four-hundred, operating expenses, mostly haulage, and I'm ready to pay it myself. If you are in favor of decreasing the budget by $10, please press one. If you do not want to decrease it by $10, press two. I'm going to give you seven seconds. Ready, go. Go. Okay, stop. Oh. You keep your $10 by three votes. Whew! All right.
That's amazing that they would do that.
Did we miss any departments while I was having lunch? Is there anything else held? What number?
We just did 400. What's that? We just did 400.
Oh, have you done it?
Yeah. Sorry.
I can't speak on it.
No. Sorry.
Any numbers that we have not covered? Any other numbers? Your chances are going. Okay. I'm now going to spend a moment and, and talk to the Finance Committee. They're adding up things. They're getting ready for our final motion, so just... I just asked if there are any others.
Debt and interest.
All right. Anyone want to talk about debt and interest? No interest in interest? All right. Any others want to talk about other? No others for other? Okay. I'll be right back.
Yeah, they're working on it.
We haven't had any motion.
But I like, I like the action where you did it this time. Where we've been talking, what does pretend here? This is the way to do it.
We just need one motion.
Yeah, exactly. This is the right one.
Whole lot easier.
So you're ready, you're ready to, need to coordinate on that with the numbers?
They'll, they'll give me what?
Okay. We've had this discussion every year, and the way we do it is, it doesn't, this actually makes sense. Your clickers are not working, speeding things up.
I keep updating forums in the chat. I keep updating forums in the chat.
Oh. I resorted to playing games while I was talking because I couldn't stand it anymore. Okay. So this is after the modifications.
Where do we take in that 2,300? We, we gotta take it there somewhere or it's not balanced. The one just added to raise appropriately?
Let's see. 26,938. Oh, what am I, what am I reading? What am I reading? I'm looking at the wrong number. So what we had here, 28,600, 784, minus this, 26,603,086. That's a whole lot different. Wait a minute. Oh, so all you did was add?
2,302.
To this nu, to this number.
But you should also?
Why is that lower?
I mean, this is important, I don't want to screw up the numbers.
I was trying to get the, get the difference between, okay.
All right, there you go.
No. No, let them take.
And this should go up too. This number should also go up by the same amount. If you're going to raise appropriately from taxation, then this, this number should go up too. I'm sorry. Both numbers should go up by the same amount. Just kidding.
So 2,8604 plus?
Oh, that's the only one that?
23, what was it?
Yeah, because that was the one that was taken out of the bottom.
Is it 2,300?
It's 2,302, right? 2,302.
28,603, okay.
And then you should also increase this.
I will, I will.
Next year, when we have, when we, when we can, when we can help you directly, thank you, Mr. Wagner. 2,302. That, yes. You're strong, you're successful.
These are the two that's been, that are going to change? So, they're out. We're going back to five. Okay, so, so I've got the motion. Okay, so, so this is going to become 28,603,086. And then this one is going to be 26,94910. And I just want to confirm this one more time. So?
You make a motion, we move it.
938,608 plus 2302, 40910. Yes.
It's good to meet you. Still got 5A and 5B.
So is Lauren Dudley, hers?
No, she's in win, I mean, they had to start anew.
So she's in her second town meeting?
No, 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 no. She was just in win.
Oh, it just starts at?
Yeah, yeah, and I guess they had trouble getting a board because of the weather.
We haven't been, we haven't gotten to the controversial ones yet.
We haven't gotten to the capital budget yet.
I know.
We haven't gotten to the water enterprise fund operating budget yet.
I know. Anytime.
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. We are going to continue. Please. I would like to get home before the fall town meeting begins. Linda?
Yes, sir. Shh.
Please.
Okay, Mr. Moderator. Bill Wagner moves that the town appropriate the sum of $28,603,086 for all items under Column 4 of the Table of Estimates under Article 5 on Pages 43 through 48 in the Town Meeting Voters Booklet, General Fund, all for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018 inclusive. And as funding therefore raised from taxation, the sum of $26,940, $940,0910, and transfer the sums as stated on Pages 41 and 42 of the Voters Booklet, and further to allow funds from the Labor Reserve Account to be applied to the appropriate salary and wages accounts.
You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? We are going to insert the words "as amended" after Voters Booklet. We're just doing it.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that? If you are in favor of this budget, press 1. If you are opposed, press 2, and you will have 8.5 seconds in which to do it. Ready? Go. We have a budget. 94% of you have approved it. And you should be pleased. Now we move on to Article 5A.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Wagner moves that the town appropriate from Water Enterprise Fund revenues, the sum of $1,790,120 for all items under Column 4 of the Table of Estimates under Article 5A on Page 50 in the Town Meeting Voters Booklet, Water Enterprise, for the operation of the town's water enterprise and provide for a reserve fund if necessary, all for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018 inclusive.
You've heard the motion. Discussion? All those in favor, press 1 on your clicker. All those opposed, press 2. We'll have seven and a quarter seconds, starting now. There you go. All right. Ready? Go. Stop. Okay. And that passes by a wide majority. We now move on to... 5B.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Bill Wagner moves that the town appropriate from Sewer Enterprise Fund revenues, the sum of $1,885,320 for all items under Column 4 of the Table of Estimates under Article 5B on Page 51 in the Town Meeting Voters Booklet, Sewer Enterprise, for operation of the town's sewer enterprise and provide for a reserve fund if necessary, all for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018 inclusive.
You've heard the motion. Any discussions? Just to mix it up a little bit, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
It's the same.
We move on to 5C. 5C.
Mr. Moderator, June Michaels moves that the town appropriate and transfer from the fiscal year 2018 estimated annual revenue of the Community Preservation Fund, the sum of $139,129 for any and all necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, as shown on Page 52 of the Town Meeting Voters Booklet, all for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018 inclusive.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. You've heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. That motion carries, and it was unanimous, and I do so declare. We now move on to Article 6, which looks like it may have two to three motions.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. June Michaels, Chair of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, moves that the town appropriate $365,151 for the items printed on Page 54 in the Town Meeting Voters Booklet as Columns 1, 2, 3, and 5. And to meet the appropriation, $293,576 shall be transferred from free cash, $14,000 shall be transferred from the cemetery sale of lots account, $15,000 from the school heating system study account, $42,575 from the parking meter fund, and that the Board of Selectment is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out these projects and purchases.
Moved and seconded. June?
I want everybody to smile while I do a selfie. Please turn to Page 54 of your booklets. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee and the Finance Committee are concerned that the town is not keeping up with the replacement and repair of our infrastructure. Each year, we receive more requests than we have funds to cover. The CIPC reviews all the requests and tries to determine which are the most urgent in terms of public safety, which will provide the greatest benefit to the largest number of taxpayers, which will profit the town by saving more than they cost. We receive very few trivial requests, but our funding is limited, so every year, we kick a few worthwhile projects down the road. We have a couple of roofs we hope won't leak for another year. We have a couple of boilers we hope will not fail next winter. We have a few potholes. We have a few vehicles spending more and more time in the shop. The list of projects for you to vote today is a bare-bones list, considering the amount of infrastructure the town has to support. The first motion represents projects which can be funded from free cash and existing funds. The largest is $115,500 for stormwater improvements. This is mandated and cannot be reduced or put forward to another year. The next largest project is $51,076 for school auditorium upgrades, a high priority for the school superintendent. We will use the parking meter fund to acquire a new police cruiser. You will note that we also had parking kiosks on there, but we found we had unspent money from a prior appropriation, so we're not moving that item. The $16,000 for portable thermal imaging cameras is a fire request deferred from last year. The $22,000 air scrubber for Pigeon Cove Fire Station will remove exhaust fumes from the fire engines from the air the firemen breathe. The Beach Street Culvert, $12,500, is the conduit for Mill Brook and is part of the work the DPW is doing to prevent the periodic flooding in the Lower Meadow. I will defer to the departments requesting these projects to answer questions about what the town will gain by approving them. And to move things along, when we get to Articles 6A and 6B on the water and sewer capital outlay, I will defer to the DPW to describe the value of those projects. What I said about capital outlay in general applies also to the water and sewer expenditures. We have used all the available water and sewer free cash to fund the most urgent needs and approved only one large sewer project to be funded by borrowing.
Before anybody speaks, I was told that there, there is some food being sold, baked goods, and it's by the auditorium, and it's the DECA kids are, are drama kids. They're giving it away, but hoping that you will donate. Is that right? Melissa? There's a bake sale. Nice. Okay. Anyone want to discuss this, or do you want to buy a cookie? Toby?
Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. I think I heard June Michaels say we were not moving that item with regard to the five parking kiosks. Is that correct? Is that out of there?
That is correct.
Oh. That's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kathleen Cahill. You weren't moving it, or you were funding it from something else? And if we are getting five kiosks, where are they going?
It is printed on the list on Page 54, but we're not moving it. We found we had not spent all of our last appropriation for parking meters and kiosks, so we don't want to add this $35,000 to what the town is spending. So we're not doing it.
You're not funding it? Or we're funding it from last year?
We had... We periodically vote money from the Parking Meter Reserve, and we found we had money left over from prior appropriations, so we can buy a few more kiosks without appropriating any more money.
So we are getting five kiosks?
We are probably going to be buying more parking meters and more kiosks, yes.
We already have the money. Otherwise, we'd be double parked. Is that right, June? Okay.
Thank you. Wedmore South Street. Just a clarification. The DPW facility design for $290,000, could you explain that? And does that have anything to do with the failed bid to have the DPW facility redone?
There are two items to be funded by borrowing. They are the subject of the next motion. This motion covers only the items being funded from free cash, reserves, and transfers. We'll get to the DPW garage and the ambulance in the next motion.
So we'll cover it in a little bit. Mr. Arsenean?
Well, Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. This is hopeless, beating a dead horse. Yo, now we're told that we're going to have the kiosks without having voted on them, because there was money left over. Probably, this is letter of the law legal, but we weren't given any warning of this when we last voted for parking funds. And I'd just like to share with you what I heard at the Board of Selectmen's Budget Workshop, where Wally Hess said that we were going to make a small fortune for the town with these kiosks. And his calculations on the small fortune included the assumption that the Board of Selectmen were going to raise the parking rates, double them on School Street between Broadway and Main. And Sarah Wilkinson at that meeting said we were going to take the parking meters displaced by the kiosks and put them out further from the center of town. I don't drive. It's not my funeral. Just beware.
I think we already passed the funeral article. Yes, ma'am?
Marsha Segal, 1 Castle Lane. I'd like to... On Page 54, underneath that long list that June just went through, there's a thing called Emergency Communication System for a million and something dollars.
That's next. We're not... That's not part of this article.
That will be the subject of the third motion. We have three motions on capital outlay. One for free cash and existing funds. One for two items of borrowing that are going to be paid back out of the general tax levy. And the third one, the large one, borrowing to be paid with a debt exclusion. Because they have different funding sources and because the borrowing requires a two-thirds vote, while this motion requires only a 51% vote, we have separate motions for them. We'll get to the emergency communications.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On the finance... Earlier when we talked, you said when we got to capital, we could address some of the things regarding that. The recommended wish list, is that a percentage of a bigger list? I mean, are we funding 20% of what people are looking for, or 80%? And is the list just... To prompt, is the list just what people have submitted? Or do we have a 20-year capital reserve study of useful life of all of our major assets? So is a million dollars like just to drop in a $10 million bucket, is the question?
We have a much longer wish list. We have a notebook like this with all the requests and the backup information every year. The DPW always wants more vehicles. The DPW has several lists of assets, including streets. It has a list of what streets are going to come up for repaving. We have a vehicle list and a heavy equipment list for what year it was bought, what the life expectancy is, when it's going to fail. And things move around. We think something's going to last another three years, but then it falls off the end of Granite Pier or something and has to be replaced. We have a list of the buildings, and we are working on another update of the master building plan, which includes estimates of the life expectancy of the heating system and the roof. Roofs and heating systems are pretty expensive items for buildings. So we have many parts of the list. And when the Capital Outlay Committee looks at the requests, we ask the departments to give us five years of requests. And we keep the five-year plan, and it changes. Things move from year to year. Things that they hadn't thought of this year show up suddenly next year. But we look at a five-year framework. And someone came to one of our Finance Committee members and said, "Why don't you publish more about the five-year wish list?" So we will try to do that in next year's letter to the town voters. We will try to have some of the... More of the items or more explanation of some of the items on the long list. Okay?
Again, we're not having a discussion. We have to see if there's anybody else. Anyone else? Okay. You have heard the motion, this first motion. And this one requires a majority vote on this first motion. All those in favor, press 1 on your clicker. All those opposed, press 2 on your clicker. You will have seven seconds. Go. Stop. And the motion carries by 93%. We now move on to the second motion.
Mr. Moderator, June Michaels moves that the town appropriate $468,000 for the items printed on Page 54 in the Town Meeting Voters Booklet as Column 7, Borrowing. And to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow the sum of $468,000 pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Sections 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes therefore. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out these projects and purchases. And further, that any premium received by the town upon sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Thank you. And June, just tell us at the outset, how many items are we talking about?
We have two items for borrowing. $178,000 for a new ambulance and $290,000 to complete a design for a DPW facility. We are having a lot of questions on debt and borrowing, so let me explain a couple of things. There are several steps in the process. The town meeting votes to do a project, and it votes to do it by borrowing. Then the project gets underway. Say the DPW is working on the project. And they tell the town treasurer from time to time how much money they need to pay the bills to the contractors. The town treasurer borrows money on a short-term basis. Short-term borrowing, we only pay the interest. When the project is done, and we have the total that the project cost, then the town treasurer goes to the... Our bond council, and we issue bonds for long-term debt. And the long-term debt becomes part of the annual budget every year, the principal and interest. The town meeting doesn't get to vote that Section 700 in the operating budget. We voted way back when we started the project. Once we have voted to do borrowing, we have a legal obligation to pay it back. Okay? Now, the second motion is for two projects to be funded by borrowing, which requires a two-thirds vote of the town meeting. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee and the Finance Committee explored every possible means of paying for these projects before recommending borrowing. The reason for this is not that we feel ambulances or DPW facilities are an unnecessary luxury. Next year, the first principal payments will be due for the Pigeon Cove seawall repairs, causing a spike in our debt service for fiscal year 2018 and 2019. After that, the repayment of other debt will start bringing our total debt service down again. Our problem is, we don't know the exact size of the spike for 2018 and 19. The seawall project cost over $4 million. Almost all of it qualified for 75% reimbursement from FEMA. But until we have received the last payment from FEMA and know exactly what the town needs to bond, the Finance Committee is extremely reluctant to add to other tax-supported debt. Now, the ambulance department and the DPW will explain to you why these projects are needed. The CIPC believes the ambulance is urgent and must be replaced this year. As for the design for the DPW garage, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen want to move forward with this project. What we want to do is get a detailed design with a clear indication of the construction cost and with alternatives and options for reducing the cost. Thank you.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. Can we separate these two line items out into two separate votes? Can we separate out the ambulance and the DPW planning?
You want to divide the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. Moved and seconded to divide the question. All right, we'll have a vote. Divide the question. All those in favor of dividing this question will press 1. And those who want to keep it as 1 will press 2. Any questions about that question? It's pretty straightforward. 1 to divide and 2 not to divide. And we'll take 6.23 seconds. Ready? Go. Divided is. Boy, this is great. All right. We will first talk about the ambulance, and we will talk about doing a borrowing to buy the ambulance. And that requires a two-thirds vote and borrow money to do it. I see Rosemary over there. Rosemary, would you like to talk about the ambulance?
Thank you. Rosemary Lesh, 39 School Street, Rockport Ambulance. We can... The bottom line is that our... We are in need of a new ambulance for our 2004 ambulance. It is 13 years old, and we historically have a program that we trade out our ambulances every 10 years. And we're... Every five years, we move it back, so we're 13 years behind right now on our ambulance, too. It is a safety issue, state mandates, state and local mandates. We want to bring our vehicle up to speed and make it... It probably won't pass state inspection this year. The town of Rockport is very fortunate that in the past, our ambulance department has always had the funds to be able to replace our ambulance on our own. This year, because of state mandates and different billing situations, we're having to do the borrowing. But we will be working on increasing our rates and probably doubling our rates, so it'll all work out in the future to have... Whether we be able... Whether we're able to fund it in the future or not, I'm not sure. But this is the first time the town has ever had to come up to speed and actually come up with the funds to purchase this. I feel the town's very fortunate to have an on-call volunteer service. Our ambulance crew is a dedicated group of individuals who are dedicated to taking care of the citizens of the town of Rockport. So I ask you to support our ambulance. Thank you.
So you've tried the Band-Aid approach, and it's just not working, is that right? Sorry. Anybody else? Okay. You've heard the question. All those in favor of this borrowing to replace the Type 3 ambulance will press 1. All those... I'll speak more slowly. All those opposed, press 2. This is going to require a two-thirds vote. Are we ready? 1 is to buy and borrow, and the other is no. Any questions on that? All right. And you will have seven seconds. Go. I feel badly. I should have given you nine... 9.11 seconds. All right, that motion carries.